With that, I'd like to welcome everyone to the third study session for Adams County Cultural Council. Melvin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, when you hear your name called, please say yes here or yay. Joyce Downing.
Here.
Jesse Martinez.
He's excused.
Megan Hartline.
Here.
Robert Alaya.
Here.
Emily Byrd.
Here.
Larry Dunn. Erica Hernandez.
Please excuse tonight.
Jim Toll.
Here.
Erin Vega. That concludes roll call.
Thank you, Melvin. Next on the agenda is process confirmation, and I will go over this just briefly. All council members should have their own flux portal up to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for and will be guided by our 2023 rubrics. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we will call on any hands raised. Council members, please keep your cameras on throughout the discussion. And a note to the public, study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourself muted. All right then. We'll just move on the agenda to the discussion items and the first organization is Historic Denver, which is the Molly Brown House. So I believe they have, they are asking for one funding for one project. With that, I'll open the discussion. So I'll just kind of make a comment. I do like the idea that the programs are both for adults and K through 12 learners. I think that's great that they have a full view like that, and I like the descriptions of the offerings. But I would like to see the schools, they said they were referring to some schools and fairs that they were going to be at, and I didn't see any locations or venues, and I would really like to see where they're going to be at. When they say they're going to be at a school, I really like the listings for it or the fairs or just where they're going to be in Adams County. But, and so with that off.
Joyce, I agree. That was some of my notes too, that I would love to know the specific locations and the walking tours in particular are really intriguing and place-specific program. And so I was hoping for more information about the places.
Right.
But what a cool concept.
Isn't it? I know. Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, I like for like the diversity stuff with the, you know, older population is really cool.
Anyone else have anything? All right. I don't see any hands. So next we'll move to Inside the Orchestra. And they are asking for GOS as well as two projects. So I'll open the conversation up.
I can start, Joyce. You know, I happen to really love this organization and what they're doing and the fact that their mission really appeals to not only the children that they're reaching, but the teachers that are working with the children. So I wanted to compliment them on that. You know, in reviewing, I'll make a comment on their first project. It, I mean, it was so in-depth, I mean, really wonderful detail and, and I really appreciated what they're trying to do. But I wondered if it might benefit from being broken out into a couple of different projects for future application years. I mean, I can see how it all kind of goes together, but I just thought there, it may be more impactful if they thought about breaking down, so.
I agree. Those were some of my notes also, and also I was hoping that, I noted especially, I think it was project two, but anyway, I had noted that about three times more programming is in Denver versus Adams County. And I was hoping possibly to see more programming in Adams County. And especially maybe Strasburg, Bennett, you know, out in that area.
Especially being located here.
Yes, yes.
It seemed like it was about three times more programming in Denver, so.
I will say, having hosted them once upon a time at the People's Building, their, their programming is big. It requires a lot of space. They actually rehearse in our empty theater on certain mornings because they don't have anywhere else to rehearse because it, it's a full orchestra that they bring to these kiddos. It's not like a tiny little thing. It is, it is professional musicians from the Philharmonic and it's a full, I mean, four double basses. So I could see a world and maybe that's just, sorry, my dog is deciding now is the time he's going to rattle his collar. If you could hear that, I apologize.
That's okay.
But I wonder maybe a little polarity in the future of what required space they need to help us put that in context. That might be part of why they can't do a lot in Adams County. But if there is that sort of, you know, clarification is always nice.
Well, that's great input because I would not have known that, you know.
Yeah. They're, they're an incredible organization. I'm a little obsessed with them, to be honest. Even though I don't have kiddos, I just think it's such a neat program.
Right. Anyone else? Is Melissa's hand up or I can't tell here? I don't see.
I don't see anyone's hand up.
All right, just let it go. Anyone else? All right. We will move then to Cantori, and they are asking funding for one project. So I will open the conversation and discussion.
I'll chime in, Joyce. Another great application here from Cantori. They just are all over the metro area these days. Lots of performances and engagement. Love seeing what they're doing. I really appreciated learning more about their approach to how they choose to evaluate. And really enjoyed learning about the diversity of the offerings that they'll be producing in the coming season. So appreciate that. I think it's a great first project home for the holidays at Parsons. Really excited to see what they could do to grow the relationship with Parsons. So thanks for putting this forward.
Yes, you're welcome. Anyone else?
Emily, great application. One question that I ran into when looking over the project was, I didn't see ticket or admission built into the budget and wondered whether this was a free concert, which was not explicitly spelled out. And I don't think that is the case. I think it's a ticketed event. So it was just a question that I mulled over when I was thinking about impact for this particular project.
Would that be under earned revenue on their financial overview? Is that, I mean, I know it's not explicit, but that could be lots of things, I guess. But when I think of earned revenue, I think of concessions, ticket sales, that sort of stuff. Maybe that's naive.
Yeah, it could be when, it could be represented in the earned revenue for the overall budget. Where I was, the question that I had was looking at the project budget where this breaks down into individual donations, grants and sponsorship and has a spot for ticket sales. Could be represented a variety of ways. It was just a question that I had.
And sometimes they actually have input right in the narrative. I mean, you know, just discussing it. So, and I agree, I didn't see anything. Anyone else?
And the reason I bring it up, if it's a free concert, I love that impact.
Yes, yes. All right. Hearing no other comments, we'll move to Kim Robart's dance. And I believe it's just one project. It might be two here. I think it's just one project. Well, open the discussion.
I really appreciate the detail given and the really creative programming here. And I love that it's at a really central, easy to get to, interesting location. One, I might have been on a ticket price rampage here. One, one thought that I had was, I really appreciate that this organization offers affordable ticket prices to reduce barriers and really wants to make sure that they can include people at any price point. And one, like, future grant comment that I had was, I would love to see any data or evidence about how many Adams County residents are specifically able to take advantage of that offering. I know we have detail about attendance and we have, we have detail about how many Adams County residents attend, but I think that would just be a really compelling case for impact here.
You know, and I agree with you. And what I was kind of struggling with was, I understand and like the idea that they're at the Stanley Marketplace, but I was wondering when they were going to be there, you know. So like a little more detail about the venue itself, when and in the times and that type of thing. And I would really like to see if there was some way that they could reach out to other areas of Adams County other than just the Stanley Marketplace. I understand that's a great place to hold venues, but it, it would be nice to see other areas also included in their, in their marketing, so. Anyone else?
Well, this is Jim Toll, and you, you brought up about the ticket prices. Under the tickets and admission income, they have $10,000 for one program and they expect 400 people. By my arithmetic, that's 250 bucks a pop. Now, that could be a technical error because they also have the Stanley Marketplace located in Arapahoe County, which is a lot closer to Denver than it is to Arapahoe.
That's actually, that's a typo. Stanley's in Adams County.
I'm aware of that.
Oh, well, great.
I'm sitting a few blocks away from it currently.
All right, anyone else?
I'm just checking that math. I'm looking at their, yeah, 10,000 divided by, I was looking at their projected attendance numbers.
Let's see, 400. 400.
400. 10,000 divided, yeah. That's not 25. Am I, am I missing something here?
25.
Dollar, yeah, $10,000 divided by, or divided by 400 guests is $25 a guest. So there's a, I hear you, but I think you added an extra zero. So I think $25 is not unreasonable for a, for a piece of professional art, performing art, but.
Right. Anyone else have comments? Hearing none.
I'm, I'm, sorry, one more thing. Salaries, salaries and wages under the project expenses. I don't know how they pay their dancers. I'm seeing professional contract services for 41,200, which but no salary or wages. And I just don't know enough about their organization on how they pay their dancers. It's a big, it's a big thing for me, making sure that artists get paid a living wage and it's not just admin folks. I'm just not seeing anything about, about how their, their artists are, yeah. So it, it'd be nice to be in the narrative a little bit, you know, hiring professional, you know, folks. And if they, they pay them a living wage or if they're, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because that throws a red flag for me that they're not paying artists, which I'm sure is not the case.
It's just not included in the. Okay. That would be nice to see. All right, anyone else?
I'm sorry, just put that a little bit in context. What I've seen over the years is there's only two performing arts organizations that actually have their dancers on a salary basis, which are Cleagle Parker Robinson Dance and Wonderbound. So this could be a capacity issue with them being a small organization. So I just want to put that out there.
Thanks, Dana. But again, to Erin's point, it would be nice if there was something in, possibly in the narrative then, explaining a little bit how they handle that situation, so.
If they're bringing in, I mean, they're, they're saying that they're going to double their contributed revenue in the next year. I mean, they're substantially double, go from 266,000 and change to 500,000 and change. I mean, that seems like a huge jump from where they were. And I know the fiscal year, obviously COVID, it looks like their fiscal year is hitting part of that COVID issue, right, where no one could get ticketed revenue. Just, I can only see two years and I haven't, you know, this is my first year on, on this committee. So I'm not sure what their numbers have looked like in the past, if they're closer to the upcoming fiscal year or if they were similar to the most recently completed fiscal year. But anyway, yeah, just, just a couple of, couple of red flags for me, but I'm not sophisticated enough, I think, to, to ask the right question.
No, that's fine.
Aaron, I can, I can address that, that they were, the organization moved and when they moved, they became a venue. And so now they have a venue revenue stream that they didn't have before. So the organization has evolved significantly in the last two years.
Great, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move to the next organization, which is Life Art Dance Ensemble. They're asking for GOS and two projects. Open up the discussion.
I believe this organization moved to Adams County within the past couple of years. And I'm just so glad to see it. I love the whole work that they do and the mission of bringing art experiences and dance experiences to senior centers. I also wanted to say that I loved the Denver Seven clip on the organization's website that had statements from participants who viewed this. And I think when making a case for general operating support, we don't rate this year, but we might be rating GOS support in future years. And statements, like impact statements from audiences, especially audiences that don't have a lot of opportunity to engage, would be huge for making a case for me when rating impact. So I just love that. And project two, I would love to hear about any plans for engaging with Adams County performers in particular when pulling together this event. I love that it's creating opportunities for smaller organizations. And I, you know, just from an Adams County point of view, I would love to hear about Adams County orgs.
Yeah.
But overall, just like, love, love the whole picture of the mission and organization.
You know, and what jumped out at me, especially in project two, I think, yes, where they talked about the cost sharing for the different performances, you know, and with the different organizations that they're doing. So I don't think I've seen that before, you know, so it actually helped everyone, you know, that was actually going to be doing the performances. So I thought that was pretty interesting. And then I, I just think I would like to see a little more detail in maybe some more outreach in the Adams County area too. So, but I do like the organization and I like what they do, so.
They created one of my favorite pandemic projects.
Is that right?
Just clever, clever, clever people. I'm a modern dance fan, but maybe I'm an easy audience, but I, I was really blown away with how they pivoted during the pandemic. So I'm just always excited to see what they come up with next.
I just wanted to commend them for being specific in their project requests with what they're doing to market all the projects. So often we get a few details maybe or, or no details. And so this, I really appreciated this. And I also wanted to say, I mean, it's, you know, it's a small organization. I, I really appreciated that they detailed out that they want to expand their presence by developing a website with, with general operating support. So commend them all around.
Anyone else? Okay. Not hearing anyone else. I will move to the next organization, which is Mirror Images. And I believe they are requesting funding for just one project.
I'm going to try not to always be first. I'm going to give a deep pause. But for, for this application, I could say like, one thing I really loved was the specificity on continuing partners and new partners. And that's one detail that highlights how much detail that they really gave in describing the project. It was really clear. It gave us a full picture of their programmatic approach. And I also just want to commend really well diversified funding sources. And my wish list for the future would be, I would love to see partners outside the metro area going into the eastern areas of Adams County. I would just love to see some more geographic spread on partners. That would be something that would really increase impact for Adams County.
You know, personally for me, I, I do like the goals and their mission to assist the youth in their thinking and their behavior attitudes and their practices, healthy choices. I do like that. And I love the idea that they're looking towards paid training, which is really good for interns. So that's, that's, and apprenticeships. Any other comments?
The idea of using the arts, talking about enterprise, our second, when we're reviewing a project, the second question we answer, enterprise and creativity demonstrated for project. Obviously, the, the School to Prison Pipeline is a, is a huge issue. And the fact that they are tackling this issue with the arts, to me, is a, is a winner. And I, I just love that it is what it is. It's not trying to meet the standards of the grant. They're just being open and honest about, about what it is and it fits so beautifully. And, and more work where I think where people are, where groups could tackle real world problems, not that lack of arts and access to arts isn't a problem in and of itself. But for example, the School and Prison Pipeline issue and using the arts to really empower and going into the juvenile system and, and really helping. I just want to encourage more folks to think creatively about how their teaching artists and how their groups can really impact and make a difference. Sometimes that's through concerts, through, you know, sometimes that's just through arts and access, but it could often be deeper. So kudos to them for, for this kind of programming.
I agree totally.
Yeah, I think for me, it's everything that he just said, but also like, you know, the, I, I've, along with what what someone said earlier as well about the schools being mostly metropolitan, I was just thinking like, with a lot of these grants, it seems like we end up having them being more like considering more of the areas with, you know, possibly black and brown students being in urban areas, but knowing Adams County like most of us do, you know, we, we need those resources in more rural areas like Brighton. So that would be nice to see things like this just in other parts of Adams County as well. Whatever feedback we could get back to folks on that would be great because this is a really cool project.
Anyone else?
I guess I was on a data rampage. Thanks for that word earlier. I, and maybe to carry Jesse's torch since he wasn't here, they, they were thorough enough to include how long the programs were at each school. And I just, yeah, I really appreciated that as I reviewed it. And after hearing Jesse talk about it and a few others talk about it last week, I was drawn, more drawn to it in my review this week. So thank you for that.
We see your dog. Anyone else? All right, let's move to the next organization, which is Mountain Chamber Music Society. And they are requesting funding for two projects. So I'll open up discussion. So I guess, I guess I can jump in here just a little bit. I do like what they're requesting, and I'd like the idea that they're in Adams 12 and in the Westminster Schools. But I would really like to see where in Adams County they're going to be, what school that they're going to be. And it seems like, and I could be wrong in reading this, but it, I think they just said the Adams County District. I think, you know, is it going to be at the conference in the admin building or is it actually going to be in some of the schools? I'm not sure. So I, I would really like a little more detail, you know, so I could determine where they're going to be. And then the, in, in the project two, and again, it's not that I don't like it, I do like the grant, but I was just wondering about, they were actually supporting outreach programs in the church. And I was just kind of wondering what that meant. And maybe somebody else could have picked up on that. I don't know. But I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
Yeah, it seems really vague. The schools are vague too, and I would think maybe like it's hard to plan that out, but like, at least as I learn more here, I feel like it would be smart to like put which ones you're targeting. And then if you happen to change them, ask to change them later or something. That just seems like it would be a better.
Right. Or at least tell us that they have to be changed in some way, you know.
Yeah, like if you pick something and for some reason it doesn't work. Yeah, like if you pick something and for some reason it doesn't work, then just tell us you're changing it like later or something. Just because it's good for us to know which ones they're targeting, like again, because of what I brought up earlier with access to other groups of kids.
And I really didn't have a issue with the libraries. It's basically in Adams County, we have anything, you know, so it's, yeah, that's kind of a given, you know, but and I think that's great. I think it's a good location. But again, you know, when, where, how, you know, I would like more detail.
For Berta Joyce, really good points. Another thought that I had with this application was that these are, these are relatively modest, modest asks for support for these programs. Looking at the SCFD overall funding for the upcoming fiscal year, sixty-five percent is a really significant portion of the upcoming year's financial outlook. Looking at past years, we're not necessarily talking about like the over reliance that we sometimes talk about with organizations. Just having a risk with having all their funding come from SCFD. But at sixty-five percent that, that is getting towards risky territory and maybe the finances will play out a different way than it's laid out. I just wanted to flag that as a potential area to be on the radar.
Yes, yeah. I think as you commented, you know, exploring other diverse funding mechanism, mechanisms would be a, a good way to go in the future. So. Anyone else? Is it Jim that is on the phone that we can hear?
Someone labeled as Kelly Van is unmuted and getting some cross noise.
Melvin, can you actually mute the, that guest? Please? He has all the power as the host.
Okay, I, I don't hear anything now, so they may have. I'm not sure who it is now.
Can you, can you hear me? Can you?
Sorry, I didn't know I was muted.
No problem. And then also Melvin, can you ask Dolly to, if Dolly, if you can hear us, get off your camera. And if not, then Melvin, can you turn hers off? Please, thank you.
So Dolly, could you turn off your camera?
At the bottom left of your screen. Where it says stop video.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. All right. Is there any other comments? On the for the organization we just were talking about. All right, here we go. Then we'll move to the next organization, which is Museo de las Americas. And they're requesting funding for one project. So I have a question. I'm going to just jump in with this one. And I was kind of going over the activities list in, that they provided to us and they said in, this is a clarification point for me. I did not know that Fort Lepton Library where they performed was in Adams County. I thought they were in Weld County or somewhere else. And they, they listed well, Fort Lepton, there's some of their performances in Adams County. And that was Adams County, but Fort Lepton, Adams County. Did I just say that correctly?
That is not in Adams County. That's in Weld County.
Yeah, that's what I thought, you know, so I just thought I'd bring that up because I, I looked at that and went, what? You know, so. Fort Lepton moved.
On another note, and this was, this was with Anything Libraries, so Adams County. I really loved the cultural partnership pass that brings exhibits like, like a traveling version of an exhibit that's at the museo to local libraries and then provides reduced ticket prices to visit the location. I think that's a really creative, enterprising way to build a connection across geographic distance. So to, to bring a taste to Adams County and then facilitate traveling to the full exhibit is just super creative and I love it. I did want more details on the school partnerships. I was looking for which schools and just more detail there.
Yeah. And I actually had that in my notes too. I agree with you, but I, I think it's a great and a creative idea. Anyone else?
Yeah, we've mentioned it before. I, I'm going to get on my soapbox a little bit. Anytime you're asking Adams County residents to travel to your location, discounted free tickets, all fantastic. But in terms of connecting to youth and all that, I, I'd really love to see some sort of transportation option. I just think it, it can really help especially our lower income folks access. And then we really know Adams County is coming. What I mean, it's a, I think it's, it's a great connection and I'm looking at their surplus, which I know they're trying to build up. Trying to be fiscally responsible and they're trying to build up their reserves, which is great. Maybe a little bit of that can be used to at least help offset the costs for some of these schools and, and students or just lower income areas to actually access the facility in Denver. That's a wish list and I know that's, I know that's a big thing.
It is a good wish list, you know? I think it's a great idea. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next organization, which, which is the National Honored Band Association. And I believe they are just requesting funding for one project. So open the discussion. So I'll just jump in here a little bit. I do like the idea that they do provide support for the Riverdale Ridge High School. And I'd like the idea that they mentor and sit side by side with the students and, and assist them and help them through the their little event and their classes. So I think that's great. And also they provide assistance to the staff, which staff definitely I'm sure appreciates. So. And just one other thing that I've noticed, they provide judges and clinicians for Colorado Band Masters Association Festival, which is really a highlight probably for them, you know?
Having grown up as a band kid, like it mentions the like, the diversity of the school, but I, and I know this might be more difficult, but I, I think it'd be interesting to find out like with an honor band, what is your reach in marginalized populations with a band kind of group like this? Because oftentimes, school bands are not very accessible to kids that have less money. And so I'd be curious to know, like this is the population of the school, but not necessarily what the bands are actually like in these specific schools. I've seen it with my own eyes. That's why I'm like, like my child is like, was like one of the very few brown kids in band, so.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. I think it's a, I think that's really important. Would be interesting to see if they would consider incorporating that in some fashion for future projects or, or their mission as a whole. I wanted to echo Joyce's comment about the side by side. That, that's really important for musical education. And I think that this is an organization that could benefit in future applications from really writing, expressing more about that part of, of the work that they're doing. Because that's the, that's the real engagement. That's the future of who will be in the next bands. Who will, who could go on to be a performer later on in life or, or more as a hobbyist. So I, I'd love to hear more about that from them.
Anyone else?
And with seventy years of experience drawn, they could probably do that well. And that's great, right? I've said it before, I, these organizations that Colorado has that are so, have, have just such a great timeline to them, watching them pivot and change with the times is really exciting. So best of luck.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. To the next organization, which is New Dance Theater. And they are requesting for two projects. So open up discussion. So of course, I just love this organization, but I do have some questions. And they were talking about having three different engagements over the Parsons Theater. Just great. The Adams County festivals, but I'm just kind of wondering when and where in the Adams County Echo Fiesta, where that's going to be held in just a little more detail about that. And what, what, what other festivals were they going to be performing at? So I was just kind of curious about that. But I love their unique collaboration with all the different varieties of the different companies and what they've done. So, but I, I guess I'm, I'm just really, really curious about the Echo Fest Fiesta.
Joyce, I, I totally agree. And I was thinking about like, why am I so curious about this? And, and what I came to was that we, we rate on like impact and I think about impact as access. And I, I really think of festivals, especially festivals that have like a modest entry fee as being a more inclusive way versus ticketed performances at a traditional venue to gain access to the arts. And so I was like, is Echo Fiesta free or cost? Can, can people come? Like, is it at a location that's a little more easily accessible for different groups of people? And, and hearing about that would definitely give potentially more impact.
Yeah, I definitely, you know, and it's just, like you say, it just kind of jumped out at me, you know, so, yeah.
I really do love the specific detail that this organization gives in their programming. They're so thorough in the explaining what programmings they'll be offering and giving a lot of detail. And I love that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Anyone else?
We've talked a bit today about the diversification of income streams and I want to really congratulate them. It seems like they've, they've really reached out to corporate partners as well as some other things, not just relying on foundations and grants and things. So kudos to them for finding a way to do that. It's, it's really nice. It makes you look healthy.
There you go. Anyone else? Okay, so we have reached a halfway point. Would we like to take a break or do you want to move forward? I am. How would you like to handle it? Want a ten minute break or move on?
Break please.
Break?
Break.
Break? I see, I, I, yes. Okay. All right. How about ten minutes? So we'll be back at what six, we'll, we'll do six, ten as it. All right.
See you in six, ten, right?
Five of six? Oh, how about six? Okay, I'm, I'm looking. All right. How about six? That works. You didn't like six, ten? See you in six.
Yeah, it was like wow, wow, okay, I'll put my hoodie on.
Yeah.
It's so funny because usually we get like just like seventy degrees spring and this felt like a cold spring day.
It did, definitely. I don't know if you were on earlier or not, you know, but I went to over to the high school earlier and they were going to have an event outside and it was so cold and windy, they moved everything into the into the gym. I mean, they just, you know, everybody was complaining. So I'm it is, it's so deceiving, you know? But we don't have, I can remember the winters that we had before, you know, in the March and April time.
Uh huh.
Not fun.
Before we get started, Zoe, I know I I wasn't here for roll call.
It's okay, we we've got you. If you're a few minutes late, we just well, really, at whatever point you show up, we make note. You're good.
I appreciate that. Thank you. For some reason, I'm physically incapable of getting anywhere on time this week, I guess.
Well, and you know.
I sat down at my computer at like five of and the next thing I knew is five after I was like, what have what have I been doing?
Yeah.
The wormhole of computer land.
It's true.
We're awesome.
We've got everybody if you want to get started. I do. Okay, I will reconvene our study session for April twentieth. And before we start, I'll just read this brief note to the public. Study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourself muted. Um, so with that, Megan, are you still there? Uh, could you hand, could you handle the North Glen Arts and Humanities? I can't, I'm on the board, so I have.
Absolutely. Um, all right, so let's kick off our discussion of the North Glen Arts and Humanities. Um, and this is the moment, speaking of computers, that mine chose to be loading, so let me uh vamp while I load and load. So this is the North Glen Arts and Humanities Foundation. And they are requesting um funding for multiple projects. We've got um general operating support, project one, project two, and a visual art review. So I'll open the floor for discussion for all of those.
See, I feel like North Glen's holding up uh the art space in our Thornton, North Glen area, so I appreciate that. Being that we're a much larger city in Thornton, but don't have the programming and a lot of folks really do enjoy everything that North Glen brings to the area. So I'll just say it's super important for our area.
Emily, I saw you unmuted.
I was debating on whether or not I should say something, but now I'm on the spot. So um, great application. Love what's happening here. I I really am excited about the fact that they, that many of their partnerships expand beyond the state of Colorado, so that's great. Would love to see if it's possible to expand some of their contributor support sectors. You know, I think there's great reliance on the SCFD. Um, so not sure what's possible there, but worth considering. Um, and wanted to also say for project two, the concerts and movie series, I love that they're including Spanish subtitles, making it, you know, one, one way of being a little bit more inclusive of all of the communities that gather around North Glen. So great application.
Thank you. That was an excellent comment and I didn't mean to put you on the spot. One, one thing that I was thinking with this application was thinking particularly about the visual arts proposal and thinking about previous organizations we've discussed this year where we were looking for more detail on a TBD sculpture. And one thing that really stood out to me about this was that it's got a really very specific and detailed plan for community engagement and selecting the TBD piece. Um, and and so that gives us some um sense of how the piece will be selected. Just, just a thought that I had that I really appreciate here. Any other thoughts or comments on this organization's proposals? All right, hearing none. I'll pass it back to you, Joyce.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is the Northland Fine Arts Association. And they are asking funding for two projects and GLS. So with that, I will open the discussion. So I'll just jump in just a bit. I I do like their proposal and I I'm really attracted to the project two, which is the Crooners and what they are, they're actually focusing on style rather than the era of music, which is, you know, a little different, I think, that you do. Usually it's the other way around. So I kind of like that. And I know that they, their tickets are affordable for everyone, you know, and they also provide it's a different scale for you to your seniors versus or low income and free tickets, so. And it's kind of fun to see also that they collaborate with the Stukey Choir, the Stukey Elementary School. Um, and they, the Stukey Choir actually looks like they have actually sang in two performances. So I think that's a great partnership and it's, it's really, I think, very valuable for the students to be able to participate in something like that. Any other comments?
I think you covered it, Joyce.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the next organization, which is Ocean First Institute. And I believe they are requesting funding just for one project. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Um, I really appreciate this project for its super multifaceted approach to deep engagement with a variety of hands-on approaches to learning, including the presentation summit. So not just like engaging in a stu- a scientific study over time, but then sharing the scientific results. That's a great learning opportunity. My note was, could one be in Adams County in the future? Um, and I would love to see additional schools outside the metro area. And I think, I think the reason we just keep bringing this up as the council as a comment is that when we look at our whole breadth of proposals, we see the same school systems in the same areas come up time after time, just representing a lot of opportunities covering the same geographic area. And and looking to see whether that access could be added to all of our Adams County residents.
Larry has his hand raised. Okay.
I just wanted to mention how impressed I was with with Ocean First Institute. I mean, you think, I mean, my first instinct was ocean first. Why are why is such a, why is such a, an organization reaching out to landlocked Adams County? But when you look at their programs and their, you know, their educational programs, it was very impressive. And of course, ocean first is their name, but they have everything to do with conservation and I was very impressed with them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, just one other thing, if I, if I may, I noticed that the the sheet stated that Daniel C. Oaks High School is in Castle Rock. Uh, but that can't be outside the S C F D area, can it?
Dana, did you want to speak today?
Yes, there's two areas in Douglas County that opted out, out of SCFD and those are Castle Rock and Larkspur. So those, they're in those areas. They don't count as being in the district.
Oh, thank you. That's astounding.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we will move to the next organization, which is the Talateers. And they are asking for GLS and one project. So I'll open up, whoops, is it one? Yes, it is. Okay, so I'll open up the discussion. So I'll kind of jump in, I guess. I really like the idea when they're at the College Hill Library that they interact with the poets also. It's kind of a unique situation where they have the local poets, look at the art and then devise their poetry and and then possibly, and then put it next to the, the art. I think that's a very creative way to do it. Very interesting. And also, yeah. And I guess I have one other comment then, I guess, more than anything that it just looks like SEFD is probably the only major contributor and they probably need to expand their fundraising efforts a little bit. I'm hearing some feedback. I'm not sure if we have. Okay. Oh, and I, did they, they did, they, they actually requested some funding over the cap. So that'll be adjusted down to the appropriate amount.
Yeah, I think about, going back to your point, Joyce, about diversifying revenue streams, you know, anybody that's in a spot, say like Adams County Fairgrounds, things like that, there's probably opportunity for, I know corporations can be tricky. Um, most corporations don't, don't have philanthropic arms anymore, but they do have very robust marketing arms. So it might be worth it to call up some local businesses and seeing if, if you've got all of those eyeballs, if it's coming out of marketing budgets from corporations, if you've got all those eyeballs, it might be good to, if you could print some banners or something like that and maybe get some corporate dollars rolling. Just as a suggestion.
Yes. Anyone else? Roberta, do you have your hand up or, okay?
No.
Okay.
I was agreeing with the marketing stuff. I thought that was cool.
Got it. Anyone else? All right.
I just wanted to mention real quick, Joyce, I'm looking at their financials. It looks like they didn't transfer something, I think it looks like they didn't transfer their individual donations down to the total revenue.
Oh.
So it kind of decreases their SEFD contribution to roughly thirty something percent rather than the fifty percent.
Thank you. Thank you for that input. Anyone else? Okay. Next organization that we're going to be talking about is Family Theater Company. They have two projects that they're asking funding for, and I believe they went slightly over the cap on project one, if I'm reading my notes correctly, so. I have to say, I'm a little biased. I just love this company. I think they do a wonderful job. They address a lot of areas that need to be addressed in the community. They're accessible to the needs of the audience. They provide services. ASL captioning, audio, you know, to whomever. I just think this is a wonderful organization, so I thought I'd throw that in.
Yeah, they're one of my favorites too.
Yeah.
The work they do.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah, just to pile on the love test. They, they produced a small new play festival at the People's Building last year. I knew of them. But getting to know them, getting to know them and how they work is pretty incredible. That all their art, you know, the, the lengths they go to, to have volunteers helping their, you know, actors who who are blind and other, and other issues, you know, it's just they think of everything and it's, it's pretty cool to see folks get an opportunity to to perform, not just for the audience, they're very good audience, and I know they do consulting as well, helping organizations all over the country.
Right.
Um, become, become a little bit more accessible, but they're, they're actors. I mean, that's just a, it's an inspiring thing.
I also really appreciate the grant writing in this application that it is really effective at telling the story of their amazing efforts in inclusion and is, so at the organizational level, it really describes their efforts, but it also broke down the projects into really easily describable, easily understandable parts that were really just well described. A great application from a great organization.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. We will move to the next organization, which is the Flat Valley Players, and they are requesting funding for GLS and two projects. Open up the discussion.
Um, I really appreciate this application and again, I appreciate a really thorough description of the programs that are going to be offered. I also just really appreciate when we're thinking about our geographic spread that this is an Adams County organization, that it's centered in Brighton, that the performances are in Brighton. This is really offering access in an area that we haven't seen as many applications cover. And just to, to go on with this organization, they really talk about the Adams County like broader impact that their performances have.
Yeah, that's true. That is true. Any other comments? Hearing none. We will move to the next organization, which is Platform. And they are requesting funding for just one project. So I'll open the discussion up.
In start, Joyce, that it was a, another good application. Wanted to just focus my comments on the fact that they use pre and post surveys to measure growth and plot programming and see really put, put the sting on what, how good, how good they are and if they can do better. Um, I think that's really important. I, I love that as a measurement tool. So I'm not vocalizing that very nicely tonight, but I really did appreciate it.
You know, I just.
I don't have.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I don't have a deep connection with this organization, except to say that I'm a, I'm a fan, the little I do know, and I think they do a really wonderful job of reaching a broader population with their, with their messaging and their, and their programming. I can't, I cannot tell you how often I see them pop up on my Insta feed or my, my Facebook feed. And I think that's important when we're, when you're talking about growing organizations and how to, how to, how to actually get people involved. Kudos to them for real successful marketing. I think they do, do a wonderful job.
Yeah, I, I just think I, I really do love this grant also. I, I think it's focusing definitely on a need that we really need to address as a community, which is graduation rates for the youth. Um, I just love what they've, they do and how they do it. And I just kind of drew me to some of the resources that they are also including in helping support with their interns, which is mental health resources, RTD passes, you know, we talked about transportation and tutoring, food pantry for the youth, technology access. I mean, it's, it's, they looks like they've just folded everything into, you know, what they're offering. I think this is great. Anyone?
Oh, I was just going to say, I think, I think this is really exemplary of like a discussion or you know, some comments that we've had on previous evenings about like deep impact versus broad impact and how like this kind of program that has intensely effective real world outcomes for the participants that are able to engage, I think, is a different way of measuring impact than like number of participants, although they also do a really good job of telling the story of the, the number of participants who are not just in the internship program, but who participate in other ways. So I, I just love this program.
Mm hmm. I do too.
I also want to mention, at the very bottom, use this space to further explain your financials. I think they did a great job of why we keep talking about why, you know, we're Adams County, you're not in Adams County. Does this help our folks? How does this increase STFD presence in Adams County? And they really spelled it out beautifully in terms of this is how we are spending, hope to spend this money to get Adams County folks here. So just, just another thing, if, if you're an organization outside of Adams County and you're looking for Adams County funding, using that space down there effectively could be, could be really helpful, could be the thing that turns the tide.
Aaron, it's like they heard your comments.
Especially the one about providing RTD passes for their interns.
Yeah, right. But, but what a great, right? Like what a great thing where they, they actually lay out what, how they're, how they're since other folks don't have access to these applications, I'm assuming these are not public. But they've really broken this out in terms of their budget and they're not, they've made it very clear that they don't want to, they're not putting this toward expenses that would just be, be their normal expenses. These are expenses incurred by connecting to Adams County. And it's a, it's a, it's a really cool thing.
It is. Anyone else? Okay, hearing then, we'll move to the next organization, which is pop culture. And they are asking funding for two projects. With that, I will open up the discussion.
Oh, if, if I may, I was, I was very impressed with Pop Culture Classroom. I was impressed with their mission. I was impressed with their application and they, yeah, I feel that their entire organization demonstrates enterprise and, and creativity for their project. They, one, one other thing, I guess it finally occurred to me that while I'm reading the application, it occurred to me to go jump out to their website and, and, and just kind of put a face to the organization. And, uh, and this one really stood out for me. Their entire their entire educational mission is to is to, to kind of reach a niche that probably hasn't been. I mean, for example, cartoons as art is not a new, is not a new concept, but I'm sure it's a new tool, a lot of their students. Uh, and I just, I was just impressed with their, their approach to education to unconventional kind of education and, and the programs they have, like it's, it's similar to Comic Con, I guess. But I think they open a lot of opportunities for a lot of kids who might not necessarily be destined for college. So I liked that a lot from them.
Okay, anyone else?
Megan, I would like to fuse over project two and just talk about how enthused I am about this kind of style of outreach and engagement that brings a taste of this cultural experience to an area of Adams County that normally would have a hard time traveling to that location. So this, this like kind of scaled to an experience in Bennett and that gives, like, they really spelled out like people who may not be ready for the full Comic Con kind of experience. This brings a convention to Bennett. Um, I think when we talk about like outreach into geographic areas, this is a really innovative, exciting, enterprising example of how to do that.
I, I totally agree with, with what everyone has said. I just think this is a, a great application and it's it just, it's a learning style that's a lot of fun, that's going to attract and keep you know, the, everyone involved in it and want to come back for more, you know, so I, I really just think it's a a wonderful opportunity and, and I did in my notes also mention, look at, you know, the eastern part of Adams County. I think this is wonderful that they have the opportunity, you know, to see how this.
And I won't ever discount, in this grant, they do a great job of talking about community building. And I think that's a phrase that we can often throw out there, but their writing is so good on this. Talking about the loneliness epidemic and, and all of that. And I think the, the way that they've written helps me understand, rather than just a, we help build communities, how, why, what, you know, what the who, what, why, when, where, how, all that. So it's really well-written and even though I'm not a I mean, I like comic books, I guess, but it's the one thing, I really get excited about this because I know so many people who would probably have benefited or would benefit from, from this kind of programming. So kudos to them for getting getting somebody like me on the, what do they call it, self-nerds? I think they call themselves at the top of the I'm not calling them that, they call themselves that, but it's, it's pretty great. I think I'm on the nerd train now. Good job.
I'm going to be there. All right, anyone else?
I just wanted to add, counsel, that pop culture's been around SEFD for a while. They came in as a I just wanted to add, Council, that um pop culture's been around SCD for a while. They came in as a tier two in twenty nineteen, and they transitioned to tier three this year. So I think we're seeing the results of them being um very involved with the county. So um, just want to put that out there that um they're not new to SCFDs, SCFDs, I'm glad that you're all able to read the amazing work they're doing.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? All right, so our next organization is Redline, and they are asking funding for one project. Discussion. So I guess I'll jump in. Um, one thing I, I feel personally is that, and we've talked about it a little bit, where the different, there's more than one project in, in one grant, at least that's how it's feeling to me. And um, so I would appreciate possibly the, the idea of picking out if it's, if it's the artwork, the semi-permanent artwork, uh, you know, and actually going through a grant with that, or the Mobile Reach Studio project, you know, it's kind of broken out. So I'm, I'm just feeling that I'm seeing more than one funding ask in, in this particular grant.
I agree, and I think, you know, we, we are open to two projects, so I think separating those out would give a little more room for a clear picture of what's happening. And I'll say, I, I love the kind of deep engagement that they're describing, and I really love the outreach to people who are unhoused and, and people who are having a hard time. Um, and I think separating it out into two projects would give more time or more space for specific descriptions because I was like, I love Reach Studio. What happens at Reach Studio? Like, what, what's the actual activity or thing? Like, what happens there? Um, so, I, agreed that I think this is a really um wonderful outreach, and I just wanted more info.
Yeah, because they really did elaborate a little bit more with the Pelican uh Park. You know, they kind of described what they were going, planning on doing there, but then the rest of it was kind of big to me, you know, and I'm going, oh, wait a minute, this doesn't fit with the narrative of the other, so. Um, but I, I think it's a, a, a good idea. I just would like to see it broken out into more than one project or one, more than one grant project request. Anyone else?
I also, I, I just want to applaud them for, for talking about, about the nitty-gritty a little bit. They talk about insurance liability, administrative costs. Um, Redline is great at this and um I just know them through their funding efforts, um, you know, uh, doing all their incredible work in the, within the Denver art community and again, who, who has programming for unhoused folks? Like, that is incredible in and of itself. And I know they, they host things and they reach program out of their, out of their Denver, Denver location. So I think that's great. If there is, if there's admin support, that's sort of rare, and it makes it stand out to me that they talk about, you know, working with and providing necessarily, what's the quote, necessary umbrella support, right? So um, I think that's, that's something unique to what they do, and it's always good to, to talk about it because we do rate um, um, we do rate on um evidence the submitting organization can complete this project successfully. And a, a good, good working knowledge of the ins and outs and complexities of certain projects, especially collaborative projects, looks really good to me.
Thanks, Erin, and just to echo some of what you said, but also those previously. And maybe this is just an overarching comment for organizations. I mean, we are reading a tremendous number of grants, and we're seeing lots of different types of applications, uh, different levels of, of completeness, thoroughness, and I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the, the more complete, the more detailed, um don't be afraid to split things out into, to more than one project. Uh, we're more, I think we have a tendency for good or for bad, but we, we have a tendency to rate things differently depending upon how complete and thorough they are. All of the details there, you know. We want all of that. That helps us really accurately assign a number for each of these criterias that we're faced with when looking at your application. We want that. We want all of the detail that you can provide, so don't be afraid to include that.
Thank you, Emily. That, that's wonderful. Couldn't have said it any better. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So the next organization is the Rocky, Rocky Mountain Arts Association, and they are requesting funding for two projects. So with that, I will open up the discussion.
Um, I really appreciated the, the clear description from this organization that broke it out into two projects. Emily, to your point, like, they, they just really distinctly um, described the different uh concerts that they're putting on. Um, so it, it was really clearly described, and I also really appreciate them um describing specific partnerships like with Adams County Pride and really how they're connecting with um Adams County outside of just the events. Um, and down to the, the point of um wanting to involve students, but recognizing that June is a time that school isn't in session. So considering how to connect with students, I thought was a really thoughtful detail.
That is true. I noticed that yourself. Yeah. And they are actually, and project one is going to be their fortieth anniversary concert. That's amazing. Yeah. And they're going to be in Adams County, so.
Um, I, I especially appreciated their um their, the, the portion of their, their application that talked about not just ASL interpreters, which we see a lot in um concerts, but access to track, I'm a singer myself, and it's rehearsal tracks, which can be, which could be a um a barrier to entry for some folks, right? They're not able to pick up things as quickly from somebody just plucking a piano. So that, I know it's a short sentence, but access to rehearsal tracks and braille. I went, that is, that's some deep thinking um in terms of access, and I, I really appreciated it.
I do appreciate the entire grant. I really think it was well-written, so. Anyone else? No? Well, that was the end of our organizations for this evening, so I'll just, before we adjourn, is there anything anyone wants to share or they need to ask before we adjourn your discussion? I don't hear a thing. No?
Um, there is one thing, just, just about the, um, the gay men's chorus. Um, just on a personal note, I really want to applaud them for their bravery for what's, you know, our climate right now nationally. Um, and the fact that they are really swinging for the fences. I just, I just want to say thank, thank you to all of our groups that apply, that have mentioned LGBTQ plus. Uh, classes or seminars or, or attention. I know that's one group out of many that we serve in Adams County, but right now, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's applied, who's mentioned um in their diversity uh section, their dedication to LGBTQ plus folks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, we'll see you next Thursday, and we are adjourned. Thank you.